five unauthorized camping.
Okay, we'll get to it here in just a second. I'm gonna, I got seven o'clock. So I'm gonna call to order this regular city council meeting for Troutdale for August twenty second, two thousand and twenty three. And thank you, Councilor Wittrin, for the last, our last meeting before summer break. I'm gonna ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could stand, please. At home as well.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation.
You're going. Let's go.
Justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Sarah, roll call, please.
Counselor Rittman.
Here.
Counselor Caswell.
Here.
Counselor One. It's like he's not on yet. Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Wittrin.
Present.
Counselor Glance.
Present.
Mayor Lauer.
Here. Thank you. Do we have an agenda update, Mr. Ray Young?
No, Mayor, the agenda is as written.
All right. I'm gonna move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Public Comment. Public comment on non-agenda consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. I'm gonna look to the gallery of the many people waiting in line and standing and elbowing and shoving. And we have nobody. Uh, anybody on Zoom tonight wishes to make public comment, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Consent Agenda. Counselor White, you wanna go ahead and read?
Consent Agenda. Okay, three point one minutes, June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty three, regular meeting in July eleventh, two thousand and twenty three, regular meeting. Three point two, resolution approving the extinguishment and vacation of the public utility easement at one zero two four Southwest Halsey Street A. And three point three, a resolution accepting a perpetual non-exclusive public utility easement from InStyle Design LLC at one zero two four Southwest Halsey Street, number A. I move adoption.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Wittrin. All in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. All right, passes, thank you very much. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Four, A Report and Update on the Two Fifty Seventh Drive Corridor Safety Improvements Project for Multnomah County Transportation. Uh, Stephen McWilliams and Sarah Hurwitz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chapel City Council members and Mayor. I really appreciate your time for coming to the Council to give an update on two fifty drive projects. And as Sarah was pulling the presentation, I just wanted to introduce myself and my co-president. I am Stephen McWilliams, uh, partner manager at uh, Multnomah County for this two fifty drive project.
Yep, and I'm Sarah Hurwitz and the Public Information Officer for transportation.
Go ahead and hit that button. There, now we're active.
Begin?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the last time we were here at Troutdale City Council to give an update of this project was in the fall timeframe, um, I believe it was November. And we were uh, here to kind of give an update of where it was at, and at that time it was uh, kind of just starting off with the project. And as we'll go through in this presentation here, we'll give you an update where we're at and what we've accomplished so far and some decisions we made on this project. Uh, so, um, general project overview is, uh, this is a multimodal improvements safety project. Um, from the northern extents at Sturgis Drive on Two Fifty Seventh down to Stark Street where uh, City Gresham begins. Uh, multimodal, I wanna just highlight the fact that um, we're focusing on all modes of transportation such as driving, uh, walking, cycling, and taking transit and other modes of transportation along Two Fifty Seventh. Uh, this is a heavily trafficked uh, road through the heart of the city of Troutdale. Um, the average daily tra- daily traffic is eighteen thousand vehicles per day with sixty percent cars and forty percent trucks and buses. Our budget for this project is approximately um, eight million. That's for construction, uh, the management and design contracts for, for this project. And I wanna highlight, we have a forty-five thousand dollars in uh, uh, what we call state flip uh, grant funds from the federal government. And that's for our green bike boxes, which I will go in a little bit further later on. And um, we have six hundred thousand dollars participated by the Mid County Lighting District for uh, lighting improvements along Two Fifty Seventh. Please. Uh, as we started out with this project, we wanted to set, you know, forward some project goals uh, to kind of guide how we're gonna take on this project and what we're, what we're going to accomplish. Um, number one is, is keeping in mind that this quarter is, we want to be used and encouraged by everybody, uh, not just driving. Um, that includes walking, mobility devices, bicycling, or even using a bus. Uh, the second point there is it's, we wanna create a comfortable space to encourage other, other modes of transportation that's not normally used by that user up to Two Fifty Seventh. Uh, and then the next two bullets, we really wanted to know, we wanna do a robust community engagement uh, and outreach part of this project so that we can really get uh, uh, user, user buyout for this project and involvement in the process. So, um, and then for the fifth, fifth bullet, um, this is a freight corridor. And so we really wanna keep that in mind that we're gonna have to do maintenance on this road too, um, for, for drivers and freight access as well. So that was a big, big portion of this project. Next slide, please. Here's the, um, just kind of a little overview of the project timeline. You can see in um, September, October timeframe is the first opportunity engagement, number one, which, which uh, my co-presenter Sarah will be touching a little bit further on, but that's the last time we came to Troutdale City Council to kind of give an update, what we're doing on that and, and how that went. Uh, from there, we designed uh, corridor alternatives. And then we, we started another engagement opportunity. And from that, we have conceptual designs in the spring and, and early summertime. And here we are after we've uh, uh, developed some of those alternatives and moved forward into design. And right now, we're about fifty, sixty percent uh, design milestone. Uh, we plan the construction to, to be spring two thousand and twenty four, and that will last most of the rest of two thousand and twenty four.
Turn it over to me. Okay, so, um, like Stephen mentioned, we had a really robust public outreach process that started in the fall of last year. And the first piece of outreach that we did was an online survey. And if you see here, uh, really this first survey was to ask people some of the issues that they see um, and that they face using this corridor. And what came out of this, well, first off, we had more than two hundred responses, which um, we were pretty excited about. That's a good amount of, of feedback from people in the area. Uh, some of the top concerns that came out of that were the crossings and intersections, the safety around there, uh, safety around those. Um, too few places to actually safely cross the street. Um, and then just a little bit more context for you guys. So most survey participants, they travel uh, Two Fifty Seventh daily or several times a week. Um, and most drive. Uh, there are smaller portions that uh, walk or bike or take transit through the corridor. Next slide, please. Um, so if we break it down by the numbers for what we did in that first phase of public outreach in the fall, we um, sent out more than three thousand postcards to residents um, along the corridor. And Stephen, can you remind me, what was the?
I believe it's a quarter mile from, insert moment, Two Fifty Seventh of the project's fence.
Um, more than two hundred flyers were also dis- uh, distributed. That was to like uh, food carts and other local businesses nearby. Um, like I said, we also had that online survey and it was in English and Spanish. And then we had this, kind of this nuanced approach to kind of have a boots-on-the-ground effort with walking tours. Um, and this was, so there was one that was kind of elected focus. We had elected um, officials and staff from uh, government municipalities that were on that. And then the other one was community focused. So we had students, uh, people representing schools. We had uh, people who lived near the corridor, businesses, things like that. And these two walking tours were really, um, just an opportunity to point out concerns in, in real time. Show us, well, you know, this, this sidewalk doesn't look safe. We'd like to see this X, Y, and Z improvement. Um, we also had four focus groups, um, with folks who live in East County. And this um, um, was, they were in the languages that are the top non-English speaking languages near the corridor based on census data. So it's Spanish, Arabic, Russian, and Vietnamese. Um, and we also did um, several briefings. We worked with several different organizations, including Disability Rights Oregon. Um, and we also did talk to the Oregon Trucking Associations as well, um, just to cover our bases in terms of the communities that actually use this corridor. And then we had two tabling events, fun opportunities to talk to some folks. Uh, one was a Reynolds High School football game where we gave out some flyers and tried to get some students to take the survey. You know, they're walking across that road frequently. Um, and then also at the Gresham Saturday Market. Uh, next slide, please. I wanted to dive a little bit more into the focus groups, um, and just talk about the importance of really including these communities in this outreach. These are communities that have historically been left out of the conversation, uh, particularly in transportation uh, projects. So we really wanted to make sure that we were reaching everybody in this, um, early on. So, um, these uh, conversations were led by community engagement liaisons. These are people that speak the native language. They've built rapport in their communities and they asked essentially the same questions that were on the survey. Um, in the native languages. And some of the top issues um, that came out of those conversations were people who are looking for better lighting, addressing speeding along the corridor, really looking to widen the sidewalks and replace the curb ramps. Uh, people also had strong support for better crossings with pedestrian activated signals. Um, I know you guys are familiar with the road. There's not a lot of safe crossings along um, the road there. Next slide, please.
Can you go back just one second and speak about the opposition that you heard from the Gleason and Division Safety Projects?
Sure. Do you wanna?
Touch on that.
Sure.
Um, what we heard from these focus groups, uh, those oppos- opposition, those Gleason and Division projects, those uh, are very transit-focused projects, at least on Division. And I know Gleason was what was called like a road diet where lanes were taken away. And I think that was a concern for, for some folks in these focus groups that, um, road diets have changed, changed the lane markings where people park to add safety in buffers for bicyclists. And it tends to make the road a little bit more wavy, but that is great from a safety standpoint, but it's, it's a little bit more difficult for, for drivers in lieu of safety for other modes of transportation. So they said they didn't, they didn't really like it. Please don't do that. And, and Two Fifty Seventh is, we don't wanna have the opportunity to do a road diet because so many vehicles per day use it. It would, it's not recommended for that use of road.
And does the, the, the uh, fact that it's a freight, a major freight, a major arterial to and from I eighty-four?
Yes, that's another consideration why road die would not be an appropriate treatment for Two Fifty Seventh.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so that was all in the fall of two thousand and twenty-two. So we took that feedback and then in January, we went back to the community and said, okay, based on what you've told us, can you prioritize some safety improvements with, you know, obviously certain amount of funding too? So the top improvements that came out of the um, the survey results were improving existing sidewalks, slowing down fast-moving traffic, um, adding some new signalized pedestrian crossings, also improving some of the traffic signals, and repaving the roadway. And we had more than a hundred and fifty responses on that too. Next slide, please. And then this is just an example of one of the questions that uh, was asked in that second online survey. So if the county has the funding available to add a crossing, a signalized crossing um, on Two Fifty Seventh, where should it be located? And what came out of that was, wasn't it the, was any of the options, basically? So people are really open, it seems, to where, you know, the, the location of where these go. I think they just want more safety. That's kind of what
Right.
has come out of all of the outreach. And I'll pass it back to Stephen.
Thank you. So after hearing all that outreach and um, uh, seeing what the priorities are, we, we looked at really our budget and how to address those, those safety issues that we heard. And um, we came up with some, some alternatives and some, you know, some base improvements and some, also some uh, uh, safety-focused improvements. And I just wanna touch on pretty much all the uh, what we'll actually be doing out on Two Fifty Seventh. So, uh, these are some examples, some pictures of them, but also explain some of them. Uh, the bike boxes that started in Two Fifty Seventh. Now, the green bike boxes are a designated area for bicyclists to, to wait to make a safer that, uh, safer turn, especially a left turn o- off of Two Fifty Seventh and onto Two Fifty Seventh. Um, and next is a bus stop improvements. Uh, we're consolidating bus stop improvements. And in addition, we are uh, widening the sidewalk to um, accommodate for, for better accessibility uh, for those, for those um, uh, transit users. And um, also putting things up to, to um, triment standards. And we're working closely in coordination with triment on that. Uh, the enhanced pedestrian crossings, the county will install two new um, enhanced hot crossings, which are the red-actuated um, uh, red-actuated pedestrian signal. So it will get a, a, a red light um, that you see up there in the right-hand picture with a center meeting as well. And there'll be two locations, one at Seventeenth Way. That's uh, between Cherry Park and Hensley, um, in an area that uh, uh, there's a connection to the Seventeenth Neighborhood and uh, students have been uh, seen to be used that for access to the school as well.
Where was the second one?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Um, signal improvements, uh, the county will uh, install all AD, new ADS push buttons for all the signalized intersections as well as upgrading the signal heads um, for just uh, updated standards for the, for the signal heads such as uh, retroreflective backplates for, for drivers to see better at night. Um, the accessibility improvements, we're gonna be upgrading all of the um, corners up to AA standards. Have you seen the upgraded ramps for, for uh, user accessibility? Uh, the lighting, we will uh, be installing and upgrading all the lighting from, in fact, what the map didn't show before is, we're upgrading the lighting all the way from the food, the new food carts near historic Columbia River Highway all the way to Stark. Um, and, and essentially that will be um, taking out the, the wooden poles and putting in the um, new aluminum David poles that are mid-county lighting standards. And really optimizing the, the distance between them so that we have the, the widest spread of lighting. Uh, traffic calming elements on this project, um, we will be installing radar feedback signs in, in two locations. This is a known treatment that can really slow, can uh, has the potential to slow down drivers who may not realize that they are uh, driving over the speed limit. Uh, in addition to that, we are uh, narrowing non-freight lanes, the interior lanes and medians, so that we can reallocate that to, to some of the bike lanes to add a little bit of a buffer space. In addition to that, the narrow non-freight lanes will uh, create an effect to lower speeds um, in the area because of the narrow lanes. Uh, the widened bike lanes is, is essentially because of the pave, repaving and restriping and the reallocation to the bike lanes. And this is also a um, maintenance project as well. We're gonna be repaving uh, from Cherry Park all the way down to Stark. Um, we're also gonna be doing a, a, a treatment from Cherry Park North to Sturgis. Um, could be a, a certain type of slurry seal or, or a smaller section because it's in pretty good condition at the moment. So. Next, next slide, please. And here's a, a map of those improvements that I've, that I've discussed in the previous slide. On the left there is at northern project extents, uh, you'll see Hensley near the bottom and uh, Sturgis near the top. And then the right-hand southern project extent takes that from, from Hensley to the, to Stark Street. And it points out there are, are total extents are, we're, we're doing uh, paving, uh, restriping, uh, bus stop improvements and ADA and accessibility improvements for the signalized intersections as well as every uh, intersection. And you'll see there are the locations of our new enhanced pedestrian crossings. Excited, please. And that is our presentation for today, and we really appreciate.
What other thing to add really quick, just to wrap it up. Uh, so you guys are aware of all the outreach that we're doing now. We're going back out to everybody that we interacted with the first time so that they know what those safety improvements are now. So we briefed you once, we're coming back to you. We're also um, potentially putting out, uh, there is an article in the um, city newsletter that I wrote that will be included in that, uh, the one that comes out in September. So there's, um, just so you know, there's means that we're, we're making sure that the message gets out to the community.
Yeah, do you have plans, or does the county have plans to do another walk and talk to kind of, to, not to kind of, but to get um, stakeholders out on the road to show, you know, this is exactly where the improvements are gonna happen. This is exactly where the new um, pedestrian uh, crosswalks are gonna be. This is an idea of where the new lighting is gonna come into play here. This is where some of that narrowing um, and bike lane improvements are gonna happen. Is there a plan for that?
Uh, we don't have a plan for that at the moment. Um, we're hoping that through this, distributing this, this map and updates to our website are um, addresses to, to public meetings and the descriptions that we have. And um, able for, um, there's abilities for, for people to come in and, and use our web form to ask any further questions. Uh, that, that is our hope to kind of explain what, through the outreach and, and what we're going to be installing so that, so that they're aware when construction comes and they see things put out on the ground.
Okay.
It's at the moment.
Is that something you're suggesting?
Well, I'm not, I mean, I, I think, I think there could be value in it. I mean, obviously it needs to play with your timeline and, and the construction timeline, but I think there could be value in bringing everybody out, especially stakeholders who are participating in the first two, um, to actually pull them back out. This is where the improvements are happening. They can get a real, real world view as to where these, where they can expect to see some of these improvements. I think it would help. I mean, yeah, you have this presentation and you're gonna go speak to other groups, but actually walking and talking.
Bring them back to the place.
Right, right.
Troutdale's a unique feel of small-town feel, and we enjoy that very much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wanna be involved.
Yes, at, at a ground level.
Uh, Counselor Glance.
Yeah, I have a question. You mentioned lighting, and I've been reading some research recently on how lighting is the number one way we can reduce pedestrian deaths. Are you happy, comfortable with the current lighting or the lighting that's being proposed here?
Um, we are, for, for our lighting improvements, um, we are currently um, upgrading really the, the existing ones to better uh, uh, lighting heads in LED lighting and really optimizing the location of those. Um, we're also adding enhanced lighting for our crossings as well. Um, typically you would add extra lighting for crossings. Uh, however, it's not a full build-out with both sides of the street. Um, it's, it's um, basically where, where they're at now, but just upgraded and enhanced lighting for, for the pedestrian crossings that we're installing.
Okay, thank you.
So I have, I'm gonna, for lack of a better term, I'm gonna harp on the both of you for just a second. And I know it's not your responsibility, but as representatives of the county, I'm gonna bring it up. So out here in East County, we have a real problem with right-of-way maintenance. We have a problem on Two Twenty Third, we have a problem on Two Hundred and Seventh, Fairview Parkway, we have a problem on Two Hundred Second or Two Hundred First. There's areas of the sidewalk where it is impassable, not only for people, for pedestrians, but also for people that are utilizing it in a wheelchair or any other form of, um, uh, if they suffer from any, any other form of disability. They're being pushed onto the road um, without having any other recourse for safely uh, walking themselves through East County. Is there a plan after you've invested eight million dollars in this project? And again, I know it's not your department's, but is there a plan for the county to not only pick up this right-of-way maintenance that's been lacking over the past three years? Um, and make it a priority? I feel like that, that will help so much in creating a safer corridor, not only on Two Fifty Seventh. Two Fifty Seventh, we don't have a terrible problem of it. Everywhere else in East County, we do. And I would, I would appreciate it if we would see that, in my opinion, a simple step to increase safety throughout East County on, on county corridors. Instead of jumping so quickly to reconstruct and rebuild, repave, when all it would take is just, I mean, a string trimmer and clear those sidewalks, create that visibility, create greater visibility, not for only the people on the sidewalks, but for the cars turning on and off those, those corridors. Is there plans to mitigate some of that dangerous right-of-way growth?
That's a, that's a very good question. And on, and I agree, it is a, is a very true concern where people have to uh, re-navigate themselves just for vegetation in the way or overgrowth and, and stormwater facilities. And um, the county is, is aware of those concerns that you're, you're bringing up. Um, I know that conversations are being taken place between, uh, you know, the new projects, the capital projects, the ones that are finished and our maintenance about maintenance responsibilities and, and capacity for the maintenance department to, to go out there and clear those, the right-of-way stormwater planters, medians. And um, what I do know is that uh, really just on the, the slowdown with, with COVID and the rehiring after that has been slower than expected than prior to that. And there's not a lot of capacity out there to do some of those right-of-way maintenance with, with vegetation as I think the county would like. And a lot of that is diverted elsewhere to maintaining other parts of the system, the, the culverts and bridges and, and uh, road maintenance. Um, but I do know those conversations are happening um, between maintenance and engineering about this very issue. Now for Two Fifty Seventh, um, part of the project is, even if we're not really replacing a sidewalk in the area, we're gonna clear and grub the whole thing to start, start fresh, at least as part of this project that's already gonna be contracted out to be part of the new, the new system that's gonna be newly clearly cleared and grubbed as well.
Okay.
But I appreciate that, that concern. It's a, it's a concern for ours too.
Okay. Do I have any other co- uh, Counselor, Counselor Rittman?
Most of the uh, well, it looks like all the work except for lighting is from Sturgis uh, Cherry Park, south to Stark Street. Is that right? It's the holy?
That's correct.
Except for the lighting. You mentioned lighting goes further, but uh, down to Halsey, but uh, um, the eight million is spent. The bulk of it is spent from uh, Sturgis to uh, Two Fifty Seventh. Um, is it, was it felt that the rest of Two Fifty Seventh was in pretty good shape as far as these issues? I'm curious how you.
I will.
About the part that's north of Sturgis.
The um, the, the original capital improvement project was, was placed in our capital improvement plan in coordination with, with um, uh, our local cities, um, including Troutdale. I'm not, I'm not very involved in the, in the, in putting together capital improvement plan, but the extents were, were decided or really early on from Sturgis down to, to Stark Street. Now, for lighting that we're going down to historic Columbia River Highway, that was going to be a mid-county lighting district uh, project. However, um, they, they tried to get that built, but bits came in a little, little high, so it was transferred over the funds and work was transferred over to us, which made it um, a lot of sense too, because if we're gonna be replacing lighting to this extent, it would, it would be a lot cheaper to get the same contractor to, to send it back all the way down. But um, as far as the extents here, uh, this was the focus of, of this project. And as far as north of, north of Cherry Park and Sturgis, um, I, it, it, early on it was decided the condition is, um, I wouldn't say, it's, it's hard to say. It was just not a focus on, on what was put into our capital improvement plan.
Okay, um, for someone heading south on Two Fifty Seventh, how uh, the lanes then, the travel lanes for cars and buses and trucks will get narrower at Sturgis? Is that what's gonna happen? And how much narrow, how much narrower are they gonna get?
Um, the travel lanes won't, won't get more narrow more than a foot. Um, reducing from, I think, they vary from twelve to thirteen feet down to at most eleven. Um, and that's, and I believe on. Um, and that's, and I believe, um, that will be, um, yeah, right at, right at Sturgis or it could be, if I remember correctly, actually the, the lane narrowing will be most likely near Cherry Park and 16th Way because the curb to curb with, um, north of Cherry Park and 16th is actually narrower than the southern extent of the project. So that's when the lanes would be narrowed, not, um, north of Sturgis.
The, uh, was, was an analysis done of the effect of that on traffic flow? It's 257th is very heavily traveled. I just wondered if you did a traffic flow uh, study. I mean, you mentioned, you mentioned kind of trying to calm the traffic or something, which sounds like slowing it down, I assume.
Yes.
Uh, those are at 257th and Stark southbound, that rush hour is backed up a long way.
So we did, we did initial, uh, speed analysis for this pro, for this corridor and we saw that a lot of the, a lot of the speeds are either at the posted speed limit of 40 or slightly above. And really what we want to do is, is slow down all or most vehicles, as many as we can to the speed limit at minimum. And, uh, we don't expect the amount of, the volume of vehicles to, to really change that can get through the corridor just by slowing it a few miles per hour. I don't think that will, that would make a difference in the volume. Uh, as far as freight traffic, that was our, our biggest concern with narrowing the lanes is, um, really the freight, freight traffic is on the outer lanes, which is the nearest to the, to the bicycle lanes. Um, also they're the widest vehicles, of course, and that was our biggest concern. That's why that's not going to be, their lanes are going to remain the same width.
Are these, um, changes to be continued south into Gresham? I wondered if, if that's being done or was already done?
I am not aware of, um.
It's not a county road in Gresham, so maybe you won't know. Uh, but, um, I mean, I think 257th is not a county road in, in Gresham, but.
No, it's not. It's a city Gresham loan road.
You don't happen to know then whether, what you're doing in Troutdale is, is continued in Gresham. I don't expect you to know. I just wondered if you did.
I do not know. I'm not aware of, of any future projects on Kane Road.
Okay. And, um, finally, uh, it sounds like given the timeline and everything, Troutdale isn't being asked our opinion of this, whether it's a good idea or not. Um, you did public outreach and the county's gonna, county's made a decision and we're, you're, you're informing us, which is excellent, but I assume we do not have some sort of veto or something. I'm asking because this is about the last chance we'd have.
Right, right. Of course. I mean, uh, we want to, because this, this county road is very important for, for getting traffic and, and users through the city of Troutdale, we want to keep you involved all the way through. Um, yes, we have, uh, made some decisions based on our public, public outreach and our, and our, um, talking with other, other government org, government organizations who are involved. Um, and our budget that we have, and we've made some of these decisions already. We are at a 50% design, which means that it's, it's pretty well decided, but we, we come here to listen to feedback, um, and, and really look at some of these details. If there's something that, that's seems like an issue, I mean, we would, we would still love, love to hear it. Um, but it's really, it is kind of a little bit of an, an informed stage and questions and feedback to keep everyone informed in the city of Troutdale.
I guess I'll say I worry about narrowing the travel lanes. The, uh, I, the rest of it, um, is fine, but I am a bit worried about that. But you know, I'm not asking, I'm not insisting on anything and I just thought I'd go on record to say I'm, I'm a little concerned about the travel lanes getting narrowed at Sturgis, but.
Can I ask a question? Are you concerned if, um, um, narrowing the travel lanes is less safer vehicles as far as potential collisions or is it for, um, bottlenecking 257th and not getting as many vehicles as there is currently?
I guess I'm worried about both.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, it is very heavily traveled. It is a truck route. It's going down to 11 feet from 13 feet. I don't know what effect that would have. I, it just, there's a lot of traffic, a lot of trucks on 257th. So, but I assume you've analyzed it. I don't know.
Well, um, we, we took kind of examples from other roads that have narrowed lanes and seen reduction in speeds and, um, really not any ill effects in any other ways as far as volume through the road or like an increase in collisions or anything like that. So it's kind of based on past, past engineering analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor One, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, I showed up after my roll call.
You know.
Here, um, so I, I want to say a couple of things in that, uh, the number one improvement thing was improving existing sidewalks. Um, but a lot of this doesn't sound like you're doing anything to the sidewalks because you, you just kind of said that the sidewalks were okay, but I just want to say like when I used to run on that road a lot, uh, when my knees allowed me to and running on the sidewalks not, is not super fun. And I'm going to piggyback off Mayor Lauer's comments earlier about maintaining uh, the roads and the sidewalk areas. And one is because of vegetation, uh, climbing its way over. And then also where the existing light poles are, you have to, you know, work your way around those light poles and they're not always in great spots. And so, um, uh, and then another thing about that is, is that after the winter season, you know, there is plenty of, uh, of rock grime, garbage and stuff that gets thrown up onto the sidewalk and in the bike lane. And that never seems to really be taken care of. Um, and I just want to say, I know again, this is not your real, um, your guys' problem or whatever, but that we're not continuing this down all the way to the, uh, to the highway down 257th is, you can do all you want, I think, to improve 257th between, you know, um, between Stark and Sturgis slash Cherry Park. But really going down the hill is where people increase their speeds and that bike lane becomes, uh, dangerous. And a lot of this is improving the area, making it safer to cross, but also what, you know, you're narrowing these lanes to create a bigger bike lane. I'm assuming that that's why we're narrowing it, that to create that buffer between the bike lane and when we don't, aren't able to go down 257th, um, you know, I might be safe for one mile, but then the next mile I'm not super safe. And so that is a little concerning to me that it wasn't continued all the way down to make it a, a complete safe situation. So I just wanted to like point that out and if, like I said, if we're not going to, again, to piggyback off Mayor Lauer's, if we're not going to maintain it, 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 it seems silly to do all these things, um, to improve it and then to have it someday, you know, a year later, go back to kind of where it was, which is dirty and unusable, I guess. That's, that's all.
Thank you for the questions and comments. I, I'll, I'll clarify a few things and, and kind of address some of those. Uh, as far as, uh, the vegetation, as, as kind of we discussed before, that is a concern for you. And we've heard it from the community members as well, more than a few times. And so this is a major concern for, for the county. And all I can say really at this time is there's conversations on how to, um, really address keeping that maintained in a, in a, in a good schedule, um, that, so that doesn't impede pedestrian traffic. Um, the sidewalk improvements we're doing along 257th, uh, we are upgrading all the curb ramps along the corridor to, to ADA and accessibility standards. We're also looking at any really poor condition sidewalk. Um, we're not tearing up all the sidewalk and putting in new, but we are, we are spot repairing areas where, where tree wells have ripped up the sidewalk. If there's a trip hazards and things of that sort that we're, we're going to address as far as this project. Um, now for the areas north of the project extents, uh, as far as narrowing the, narrowing the bike lanes, uh, in that area, um, that's typically done when you're, when you're already repaving, you, you repave, generally you grind off the top layer of the pavement. And then when you put a new layer, you have an opportunity to where to put that striping. It's a lot more economical to, to do that at that point rather than grind up the, the striping and, and then reallocate at that point. And as far as why we haven't done that as part of this project, um, projects are just kind of allocated at sections at a time. I think now that we have done this project to, to narrow bike lanes and reallocated some of those spacings, if and when that's a project, at least for maintenance of the road, repaving, I think it will be seen that, hey, we want to, we want to connect into this one at this point to, to make it a more smooth transition for, for bicyclists or pedestrians.
Oh, and, uh. Thanks, yeah.
One, one of, one other addition I wanted to touch on, uh, you had concerns about the light poles, um, I, we're replacing all the light poles and we're actually going to pull them out so that there's definitely adequate space to maneuver around them now.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, appreciate it. And I, I just real quick, one more thing. Are you taking any, or I, is there any area coming out of the median area, you know, where the turn, the turn lanes is any, is that getting, um, decreased to create more room? Okay.
That's going to be taken from as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Counselor Lance.
Yep, uh, the narrowing, one thing, uh, came to mind. When you, especially in the evening commute, when most people are going north to south and you come up the hill, most of the trucks can't keep speed. And so a lot of cars are trying to pass them. And I have, maybe because I'm also in a Prius, a small car, but you get behind those trucks, you can't see the signal light. And you certainly wouldn't be able to see if there's a slow truck, if someone, you know, was starting to cross or something like that. Um, that would be my only concern on narrowing is that we pay attention to that intersection because the trucks can't get up rapidly and a lot of cars try to move around them going up that hill to keep speed.
Yes, thank you for, for that concern. Um, I have seen that out there where trucks don't quite make it up the, make it up the hill. Um, however, I think some of our signal head improvements, where there's a place and make them more visible for drivers, the hope would be to help that, that scenario there.
Thanks.
Mr. Ray Young.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we've heard several comments from council and I'm going to look at Sarah and the mayor. It sounds like the council would like a report back at some time when someone has an answer about maintenance. Because as we've mentioned on all streets, but I've also mentioned to some people have said to me, 238, the brand new 238 hill.
Oh, yeah.
Looks like a weed garden, the whole thing, three, four feet high, weeds all the way up. I was shocked at how ugly it looks going up that hill. So I think we don't want that happening on 257th. So if I could ask Sarah, is that something you could follow up with us on, get us the personal or Stephen, whoever.
I'm sure we.
Once you figure out what the problem is and what the plan is to solve this issue of vegetation maintenance, uh, I'm sure we'd love to hear that.
Do that, so.
Go ahead. Counselor White.
Yeah, I'm Stephen, Sarah. I remember you both from the tour and, um, you know, at that time I kind of voiced my opinion about narrowing the lanes. I go, I'd rather see widen, widen it from the right of way. There seems to be ample right of way along that route. Um, you know, I drove, I drove truck for a living, so I know how important that wiggle room is. And, um, you, you have to button hook if you're making a turn, like if you're going to go to Albertson's, which requires you to kind of cross the lane next to you to, to, to actually make that turn. And, um, I think Dave Rittman kind of summed it all up because, you know, we asked for things when they did our intersection down here at the bottom of Buxton, because we wanted it to fit in with our city, which is historic feel and we asked if there was something they could do different. And instead we got this standard issue at Green Paint for the bike lane lasted about six months and looks terrible in my opinion. And we had, now we have these white posts sticking out and to make it so vehicles can button hook like I was talking about without hitting a pedestrian. So I think we're, we're going to have to have those all along 257th if you shrink those lanes down. So I guess my question is who do we talk to? Who, is there someone we could talk to from the county um, that we could try to stop this before it happens? And I'm also, I brought up my concern about response times because we get our, our, um, fire service from Gresham. And we already have really long response times. And I think slowing, slowing traffic down and narrowing lanes, that's fine in a commercial district, you know, I'm fine with that on, on historic highway or you go further up Halsey into the other two cities. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm for commerce and freight and, um, you know, other than the students, um, when they, when they go to school and leave school, there isn't a lot of bicycle or pedestrian traffic. Not too many people want to go up that hill. There's, there's very little shade along that road. And so you're just cooking yourself going uphill with no street trees or anything like that. And, um, I talked about the idea of, um, cleaning up the sidewalk because we were tripping over these old utility boxes and then you've got a row of mailboxes that's in the middle of the sidewalk. And I think we all were thinking that's the direction you were going to go and clean up the, clean up the sidewalk. I think the bike lane's fine. You know, and I, again, I didn't see any bikes except for our staff. Some of our staff ride bikes religiously and they were there with their bikes. And but, uh, I'm from, you know, originally from Washington where, where there is no bike lanes. So I, I mean, having that bike lane is a great buffer for, for everyone. So I'm not saying let's not have a bike lane, but let's not widen that the expensive freight, commerce, safe, our, our town's safety, that sort of thing comes first for me. And I'd like to know about if you're going to have street trees, if you're thinking about them, um, any kind of street trees for shading, that sort of thing.
Sure. Uh, I'll, uh, kind of address the, the narrowing of lanes, uh, first. I mean, yeah, I, I understand it's like, as you're, um, have did, done freight in your life, that, that, um, it's a major concern for us to, to not really constrain going, that going through 257th. And so, um, we, we're maintaining the same width where the freight user, which is the outside lane, um, I want to say it's 12 feet right now. We're not going to touch that lane. So, so freight will have the same, same, uh, uh, width. Uh, however, that reallocation from, from driving lanes or passenger car lanes in the, in the center median, that's going to be reallocated really just for, not really widening the bike lane necessarily, but adding a buffer between the, the trucks and the bikes. Um, as, as you've said, that there's not really a whole lot of bicyclists or pedestrians outside of school being let out. Um, the hope is to improve, uh, the street to be in a condition that encourages other modes of transportation that hasn't been, sort of been used on there as well. Uh, that was one of our goals of this project. Um, and as far as street trees, um, that is not quite part of the project because, um, we are not expanding the width of the sidewalk um, at all, um, unless, unless we need to do it in some of the curb returns to have enough space for the push buttons and everything. Um, so adding some of the street trees that would constrain the sidewalk is not, not going to be a priority for us. And we do have limited right of way as well. Um, a lot of the areas were up against the property line on the back of walk and, and sound walls as well. So in order to get more space for travel lanes, we'd have to, yeah, it has to be taken from somewhere because we can't take out really a wall. It's not feasible for us to take out walls and, and acquire right of way to, to widen that space. And the, the, the safest place for us would be during those travel lanes to reduce some of those for also encouraging, um, slower speeds as well, um, to reallocate some of that lane width to the buffers.
Were response times looked at at all, like what that might do for a fire truck coming from Gresham? Do you guys look at that at all?
Um, with that, the assumption would be the, the fire truck or emergency response vehicle would be using the, uh, the allocated truck lane if, if feasible. And, um, that is remaining the same, maintaining the same width. So there wouldn't really be a difference in travel.
Um, how wide is the bike lane getting increased to?
Um, so currently it, it very, well, it varies, but it's five o'clock at. Um, so currently it, it very, well, it varies, but it's five o'clock at, I mean, sorry, five, five feet is minimum. Um, and in reality, we're, we're maintaining really five feet. But reallocating a little bit of buffer space between um, the travel lanes and the bike lane. And that's where some of that, so you can, it can kind of be considered widening, but it'll be really a space taken up by striping.
Is it, it's going to be a double white?
Yeah, like a double white.
Okay.
Line.
On the line between the bike lane and the travel.
And the freight line, yeah.
I just love what they did at two thirty eight. I think they made it safer for everyone and and they did that by widening the road. So it's, you're kind of asking us to do the opposite or just leave, we're just saying leave it alone. I'd rather see the money spent to improve those sidewalks and um, group lighting. Underground power, if you're, if you're taking out wooden power poles, that seems to me like the time to underground it, especially in Trappale where we get some pretty severe winds.
It's actually fortunate that area is underground.
All it is, okay. I couldn't remember from the tour.
Yes, it's underground, which is nice.
So what wood poles are being replaced on?
The wood poles have the, the lighting arms, the luminaire arms.
I, I was confused.
And some other um, power and communications going off to houses and other things.
Well, I appreciate your outreach and the tour and, but I think like Dave Rittman said, you guys are probably going to do what you're going to do. But if, if I just be on record that I, I would definitely prefer, uh, prefer to see the lanes the same width. So I think they're safer that way. And like I said, we're worried about our response times and commerce getting through there. And like Council Glance said, you know, a lot of those trucks can't go very fast up those hills. So if you're talking about having just one lane for them that they're supposed to be in, they need, they need them both.
Thank you, Glenn. Ray, you got your hand up again?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not rule the mayor. My apologies.
Okay. Now, if there's no other comments from council, I am going to open it up to public comment really quick. So um, no more comments from council regarding this. All right, let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. Uh, anybody in council chambers wishes to address county staff on this matter, now is the time. Yeah, I'm going to have one or both just kind of step back just for a second and we'll let. Thank you. And then I'll bring you back.
Yeah.
Greetings, Adrian Kestner, Trappale. Um, I guess my primary concern on the two fifty seventh corridor is, is that of speed. With all acknowledgement to uh, Councilor White and needing to keep freight traffic moving. Trucks coming down the hill at a, what I think a lot of people consider to be an unsafe speed. And certainly an unsafe noise level, um, to be kind of a menace. Um, not to mention the, the periodic street races that we seem to hear about people trying to get up the hill at a elevated rate of speed. Now, I realize that there is a limit to what you can do in the design to limit things like that. It's more of an enforcement issue than anything else. But I do want to call that out and that uh, it is something that is important to residents around that corridor. To, within reason, try to keep the, keep the, the speed, particularly coming, coming north, coming down the hill somewhat under control.
Thanks, sir. Anybody on Zoom wishes to make public comment, you both can come back to the table, please. Anybody on Zoom wishes to make public comment, now is the time. If you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself and stating your name and city of residence for the record.
Um, Mayor Lauer Paul Wilcox.
Good evening, Paul.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. Just briefly, I wanted to uh, touch on uh, semis versus bicycles in particular. There's a reference to uh, making the outside lane a freight lane. Does that mean that um, there'd be signs saying trucks right lane only? Because right now they're using both lanes. You'll see semis, you know, right next to each other. And also, uh, I can remember when um, before Gresham widened the south end of Kane. You know, this wasn't, it wasn't a through truck route. It stopped at Stark Street. But as your statistics indicate, uh, forty percent trucks, uh, it's a major connector between twenty six and eighty four. Also wanted to mention the uh, bike, bike lane next to a freight lane. I've seen triple trailers on that road. So, you know, if I'm, I'm riding a skinny tired bicycle in the bike lane and I've got a hundred feet worth of tractor trailer kind of up behind me, forty, fifty miles an hour. I'm going to be a little bit nervous. Not, not that I'd ride that road on a bicycle anyway, but uh, some people might, might be a little more daring than myself. Uh, that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Paul, anybody else wishes to make public comment on Zoom, now's the time. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record, please. All right, not seeing anybody. I'm going to close public comment. So I think uh, Mr. Wilcox brought up a, a good point on signage. Are you planning on adding signage just to add that, that information that you are planning on having that? What is that, the east side, southbound lane? I guess, and then the west side, northbound lane is being freight only, not freight only, but freight is advised to use that lane.
Yeah, um, our conversation with, with um, uh, people who ran through freight, freight through this corridor. Is they use a right lane um, as like kind of a safety for, safety for them. Like they don't have to worry about fa- faster moving traffic. Um, however, the, the point of could you add signage of trucks use right lane only signage? I would have to look into that if we have, if that's a, a recommendation that we can, we can add into this project. Um, or if uh, it's something that's enforceable as well, or maybe it could just be a recommend, recommendation sign. Um, I'm not sure. I'll have to look further into it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, yeah, Council White.
Sorry, I, I forgot to ask one question. I wanted to know what the proposed speed limit is going to be for that section of road.
So right now it's, it's posted at forty miles per hour. Um, our speed data has really confirmed that people go forty, but it's some, but a little above. And, and our goal for any of our roads would like to see lower speeds. Um, that's, that improves safety for, for pedestrians in all modes, really, that if a crash does occur, that you have less impact. Um, uh, but we are not necessarily uh, going to be shooting for like a lower posted speed limit just yet. We like to see these improvements and then possibly uh, and, and come back, look at some of the speed data. Did these traffic calling elements that we installed reduce the speed? And if it does, um, I'm sure we're, we'll be looking to apply for, to O dot to reduce the speed zone to closer to what, what vehicles are traveling. And the hope would be lower than forty miles per hour right now.
Thirty-five?
It'd probably be closer to thirty-five, I think. Um, if we're seeing right now, we're not really making any major changes. Um, it, it wouldn't be that much different than forty, I would think. We still want to get like many have had concerns, and we just want vehicles to go through there.
Yeah.
I'm a fan of those signs along Marine Drive that just tells you how fast you're going. And because I know our police are very busy and uh, but that's something that's always working until we're there. Maybe like the, at the tour, you talked about maybe getting.
That's part of the strategy.
Yeah, we'll be putting a couple of those in.
All right.
Especially straightaways where people like to.
Yeah, let's see how it goes, I guess, after the improvements before we just start chopping away.
Yeah, not advise to just lower the speed limit if you don't have anything that really backing up.
Yeah, I think if everyone was going forty, there wouldn't be a problem. But you know, it's, it's epidemic. And I got passed the other day by motorcycleists that was probably going a hundred and thirty miles an hour. And it startled me super bad, but the, there was a state patrol right on his tail. And I've never seen that in all my years of driving. It just recently happened, but seen a lot of crazy driving out there. So, and you understand the need for more safety.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much for the update. Thank you for the information. I appreciate it. Thank you for taking our questions and comments from our citizens.
Absolutely. Thank you, everybody at council. Thank you, Mayor Lauer.
Yeah, all right. Have a good evening. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number five. A public hearing and introduction to an ordinance prohibiting camping on public property in accordance with state and federal law. Mr. Ray Young, the floor is yours.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Um, random camping by those who do not have an alternative place to sleep each night is an obviously a regional problem in the metro area. Uh, Trappale does have a general anti-camping ordinance. Uh, we rarely have to use it as a stick since when it is applied or may be applied to those who are experiencing homelessness. Um, we usually involve conversations and offering of alternate services and places to go. We haven't had to use it. However, our current camping ordinance, that while in and of itself is not illegal. As it may be applied to those experiencing homelessness, it is illegal according to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And as recently, um, as not this legislative session, but the one before, the legislature passed a very specific um, law. Stating that cities could not have ordinances that did not have objectively reasonable time, place and manner restrictions regarding camping for those who are experiencing homelessness. So to ensure that we do continue to have this tool, even though we don't like to use it very often, if ever. It is important that our ordinance reflect what the state statute and the Ninth Circuit says we have to do. So um, you know, what is objectively reasonable time, place and manner? You could ask a hundred lawyers and a hundred lawyers would give you a completely different answer. Um, the ordinance that you see before us, that the staff is proposing, um, is one that closely approximates other cities in the metro area. For the simple reason is it's always nice to plagiarize from others who have done a good job at it. But second of all, um, it's nice to keep our ordinance close to the other cities, especially larger ones like Portland. Because the state statute specifically allows for litigation against cities who enforce ones that are not objectively reasonable in time, place or manner. And the odds are another larger city in the area is more likely to get sued than we are. And we could learn something without being involved in litigation if ours is not correct in terms of state and federal law. So that's why it's nice to keep it fairly narrow and close to other cities and what they do. Um, so that's important to remember in this crafting. And that's why, because I know the question will probably come up is, is that, well, did it go to P S A C first? And this applies to the solicitation ordinance we'll talk about in a minute. Uh, no, it did not, um, for several reasons. One, on the camping ordinance, we were, uh, the cities were told to have it fixed by July first. That's why in the news this summer, you've seen a lot of cities just pass them right before July first. Since we weren't enforcing ours against those experiencing homelessness, we didn't have quite the rush. We figured we might as well catch up and get it done as soon as possible. Second of all, as I indicated earlier, the law is very narrow in what we can do and get away with. So since there wasn't a lot of flexibility to put a community spin on the camping ordinance. The staff didn't see that we would get much value out of that as opposed to coming straight to council. Um, but then again, it's up to council if they want to consider it now or send it back to P S A C. I just would anticipate that based upon Mr. Trumpke's advice, um, the P S A C over, I'd be told, there's not much you can do. Too differently from what you see in front of you, unless you want to go way out on a limb and try something different that no other city is doing. And then you put a target on your back uh, to get sued. Um, so those are the things that we have to consider when it comes to this ordinance. Uh, I know you're going to get public comment uh, from uh, Paul. And I will tell you that Mr. Wilcox, I won't steal the thunder. He has a good suggestion on a change of one small part of it that I would endorse. When he proposes it to the council.
Ray, talk for a moment about my opinion, and that is my opinion. There's not much that can be done to um, change this without putting a target on the city's back.
And that is it, Mayor.
Okay, um, I don't know, I'm hoping everybody had a chance to read through um, what we have proposed. So I'll just start with comments from council. Council Glance.
I came prepared. Um, a couple of things.
I wouldn't expect anything less.
Um, I was, I totally agree that uh, copying what like Portland does as a base is an excellent idea. And one of the other things, I looked at some of the surrounding areas. I wanted to, I would think we would all want to have similar hours. And I noticed that Gresham's hours are different. Um, so that, that was one item. And then one of the things we don't have in ours under place regulations that Portland does have. Is they included an environmental overlay zone. I would encourage us to have as well, which leads into the next question of what are, what would something like, I'm in the Sweetbrier area. And there's lots of um, like areas to walk and fields that they have greenways. Are those considered public?
It depends on where that greenway is. It depends if it's part of a subdivision, if it's a part of an HOA or a part, a part of a right of way owned by the city.
Right, most of the, most of the uh, green spaces are HOA owned, which makes them private property. Uh, and subject to HOA uh, regulation and not city regulation. And if the city did start to say that neighborhood, you can't use that space there, you're, that space for your kids to go camping at night. And you know, neighborhood sleep, look togethers and things. Uh, that could be considered a taking of, of private property from the homeowner association. So we probably want to just stay away from that as much as we can.
The other thing to remember is, is that the Ninth Circuit restrictions don't apply to private property. And the state law doesn't apply to proper property.
Right.
They can ban homeless, non-homeless, any way they want from camping on their properties, their property rights.
Right.
Um, uh, in regards to um, the question regarding the environmental overlay zone. Sure, you want to add something there at an additional area that they cannot camp at, um, would not be a bad suggestion. It's just interesting when I've talked to the Portland city attorney about their whole camping ordinance. They don't have the resources to enforce ninety-eight percent of their code. They say, we only maybe want to enforce the environmental overlay zone part. Because that's the only time I think they can get political willpower is when environmental zones are being damaged by the camping. Every place else, I don't think they're going to enforce it.
They do, they do enforce it across the street from City Hall and the park.
So I'm going to bring something up, Sandy, just kind of dovetailing off what you're bringing up. Um, near you, the reservoir site owned by the city. Um, that is city property. Now, I would not advise, I would advise adding a environmental overlay stating that we would not allow camping on our drinking water facility sites, anywhere where we have wellhead protection, uh, water rights, anything like that. Because of the environmental impact that having people, I guess, living, for lack of a better term, on that property. And what the impact that could have on our city's drinking water facilities. Um, now granted, that's a reach when it comes to a reservoir site. But it's not so much a reach when it comes to a well, a well site. So um, that, that pertains to your neck of the woods because of that reservoir site. Um, that is public property. Granted, it's fenced off and it says it's a federal offense if you, if you um, uh. Trespass, thank you. I was going to, I was going to say access, trespass that property. But it does say that it is a city property.
What I, I'm just making notes here as you're talking, I'm just thinking on the list of place regulations. Um, something that's easy to see and enforced, maybe a number six gets added, which says within a, I'm just picking a number. Within a hundred feet of the Columbia River, Beaver Creek, Sandy River and any city-owned utility facility.
Yeah, I would, I don't know what the wellhead protection, I want to say it's a hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, it's a hundred and fifty feet from any of these.
Just to, just to make it, just to make it, I can't remember if it's a hundred or hundred, and I should know this.
It's, it generally is two hundred feet from a septic system, so, but so I'm not sure about wellheads uh, from just general trespass.
I don't. Go ahead. Sorry, I, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
Uh, Portland says within two hundred and fifty feet of the environmental overlay zone, river natural overlay zone, river environmental overlay zone. And they go into some other flood hazard areas.
All in favor of accepting two hundred?
Two hundred and fifty.
And then uh, my last question, at least for now, kind of goes back to the enforcement. And then, my last question, at least for now, kind of goes back to the enforcement. I know that we didn't want to do anything about dogs in parks where it says you can't have dogs in parks. And I'm looking at some of this, under manner regulations, item three, where it's like they can't leave trash there. And I don't know why we even have that, because we'll never enforce that.
I don't disagree with you. But I'm looking at Ed, and Ed's fingering through his papers.
It makes sense to put this here with the rest of the reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. Otherwise, if you just say you can't leave, you know, your general litter and trash, people may not see it with these. And, and there may be something that is less than clear about it, which somebody could say is, is makes it unreasonable, and maybe a judge agrees with that. Instead, it's, it's nice and tidy, it's all together in one place.
I would also say that, while I agree with what you're saying, that, you know, how are we going to, or are we going to enforce that? Having it in there allows us that enforcement arm. Think of it as, I think of it as similar to, if I were to go to Sunrise Park and take a gar, a bag of my home garbage and just dump it on the park. We have the ability to enforce littering, dumping, all of that for a citizen that is housed. We should have that same enforcement arm for the same type of problem for our homeless citizens as well. I think, in my opinion, that's my opinion.
Mayor, if I could explain, one example that I would love to be able to use it now is, we have individuals who are camping on the island within the city limits, next to I-84 Bridge, who are defecating on that island. And under this ordinance, we would be able to issue a citation, even though the Department of State lands is dragging their feet on the idea of posting it and kicking them off, which hopefully they'll do later this week, at least we would have some avenue of being able to cite individuals who are camping out there, if they're leaving feces of theirselves or their animals out there. So it does give us some tool to use when we're not getting cooperation from another government agency who owns property in the city.
Yeah, my last comment, I know I said that before, didn't I? I'm sorry. As I noticed, Gresham tried to put in something about private property, and what I took away from it is they were looking at, you know, like, an out-of-state owner that has an, an open field and camping on there, that they could go in and clean that up as well. Is that out of our best choices to avoid litigation to include something like that?
You do have a nuisance ordinance already that can be enforced for people either who live there or who don't live there, are out of state, who create a public nuisance, including, attracting vermin and accumulating garbage and all on private property. I know we've enforced it a couple of times in the last few years against a resident or two of the city, so.
We have a tool for that, and we do use it generally within the ordinance, as Ed mentioned.
It's a good, I, I think that's a great idea to have something inside there specifically calling, so I'm thinking of down at Big Four Corners, down at the Drainage District's pump house that takes all the water from Fairview Lake on down the Columbia River Slough, where they've had historically over the past three years, an endless amount of homeless taking over their property. They were able to get the majority of them moved a few times, a majority of them moved on to private property owned by a business, an adjacent property that was a private business-owned property. When they were starting to deteriorate that property to a point where it was creating its own nuisance that just spilled back out onto the public land, the, the other jurisdictions started looking at citing that private property owner and saying, all you're doing is, is adding to the problem. Should we have something in there that says, if you're allowing this on your private property and it's creating a nuisance in the city right-of-way, or a potential nuisance for the residents or something, burning, car, parting, all kinds of other types of environmental nuisance, should we have something in there that says, the city will hold you liable for those nuisances related to having homeless individuals deteriorating your property, spilling out into the right-of-way? Could we, I guess I should say?
The problem, I think, is Portland's ordinance on that prior was that an owner couldn't get some squatters out of his house. Then he died, if I remember right, and the squatters stayed, or he went to a care facility and the squatters stayed, and the city couldn't enforce the nuisance ordinance of Portland against the squatters. Your code was written after that to make sure that we do have that authority already in the nuisance ordinance. You can go after the owner or, and the squatters individually for doing that sort of thing.
Okay, so we don't need an asterisk in this?
That's my recollection of how we did that. You could make a reference to that code site potentially, but, but I don't believe you need another, a new code section.
Okay.
Yeah, the thing is, if you look at the ordinance under Chapter Eight, it was 23 separate defined nuisances.
Let's think of 24.
Right, well, 24 is, the enumeration of nuisances in subsection A of the section shall not limit the power of yours truly to investigate or declare any other condition a nuisance which is within the scope of this chapter. So if I determine that, yeah, that's kind of like this in the chapter, it's a nuisance, start finding somebody. We do have a fairly big catch-all phrase.
Right, and I want, I just want every, you know, I don't want to punish a private homeowner for being taken advantage of by this type of a situation, but at some point, if they continue to allow it and not mitigate the problems that come from it, at some point it turns negligible, negligence, turns to negligence, sorry.
We get, we had that problem often with people who rent their homes to people who buy that nuisance, and we try to work with homeowners as long as we can, and to help them, get them out. We had one recently that was in foreclosure, dealing with an out-of-state bank institution. It was a pain in the rump, but we finally got it done. And we were relatively nice to the banking institution, which maybe we shouldn't have, but that's the word.
Well, their lawyer turned out to be a decent individual who did his best to get it cleaned up and taken care of.
We do, as a principle, do work with innocent owners unless they get really dragging their feet on us.
Okay. Good point, Sandy, thank you.
Yeah, you, you folks don't hear about a lot of those things, it just sort of happen and get dealt with.
Thank you for dealing with them. Any other comments from council? Concerns, ideas, questions? Yeah, Councilwoman.
Yeah, so I was familiar with the first read of the Ninth Circuit Court findings. Did anything change?
Yes.
Okay.
In July, the Ninth Circuit came out with a rehearing, and I did, I did, Ray was happy that I didn't have to read all the way to page 56 where all of the...
55 and 56.
55 and 56, where the good part is. Basically, it says, and they cut back on what they had said earlier. "We affirm the district court ruling that the city of Grants Pass cannot, consistent with the Eighth Amendment, enforce its anti-camping ordinances against homeless persons for the mere act of sleeping outside with rudimentary protection against the elements, or for sleeping in their car at night when there is no other place in the city for them to go." That's the rule. You can't arrest somebody for sleeping in their car or outside if there's no place for them to go. And that's where, when the city or a homeowner has an issue with it, they call the sheriff's office, who sends out their team to offer services to the person and get them to go to a more appropriate place. And that is allowed by, by this, was it July sometime this came out? I think it was, that doesn't say the date on it, but it wasn't very long ago that this revised opinion came out. Oh yeah, 7/6, just after the 4th of July.
So I know through the LOC that the lawyers there, we talked about this at the OMA Conference a couple of weeks ago, this, the Grants Pass case. And, you know, Ed, I'm sure you know, you get lawyers together and they want to nitpick every word and every finding and every sentence that comes across. And one thing that they were looking at and questioning was the word "car." So does it mean vehicle, or does it mean car? Does it mean RV? Does it mean a vehicle with no wheels? What does it mean?
I think it means...
And how to enforce that.
I think that the judges who wrote this were just summarizing it and saying, we're not going to give a laundry list of every kind of vehicle. Somebody could probably sleep in a boat, in a trailer, and that would probably fall into the definition of a car too, in this circumstance. I think you just have to take it for the, the general proposition that people have to sleep someplace, and they've got to be able to have a place to sleep, and the city can't prohibit them from sleeping, period.
Here it talks about place regulations. I wonder if we should talk about trails or parks, or is that just considered public domain, so we don't need to restate it? But some trails, I know the ownership changes along the way. Sometimes it's, you know, Bonneville Power Night Night on it, for ex, section of it, or Levy Ready Columbia. I wonder if we should just have something about trails? That seems to be where, why cities have their biggest problems, is in parks and trails. I'm just making sure we got enough protection.
Again, I, I wouldn't want to just say generally all trails in the city, because some of those will be owned by PGE, or Bonneville, or, and, and the city doesn't control that, doesn't have, you know, the right, that Bonneville might say, sure, everybody come sleep on our, on our trails, in which case the city has no authority to enforce the ordinance on that owner's property. But the nuisance regulations would still apply, so.
Yeah, if we go with 250 feet from the Columbia River, Beaver Creek, Sandy River, you pretty much cover about most of our trails within 250 feet of those three rivers. So we probably covered the vast majority of that already.
The biggest problem I see near me with homeless is, they're, they're sleeping in their cars, and they're, they're either parked where it says no parking, or they're parked in a day-use area. And when you, when you give them three days before they have to leave, and then a new person moves into that spot, it's like, you're not fixing any problems there. So I think that's an area we need to tighten up somehow. And, you know, it's very disturbing, because you don't know who's there. A lot of times they're screaming all night long, or letting their dog bark all night long, so, you know, it's a big disturbance, and it makes it, makes it to where the public don't, doesn't want to go there, even in the daytime, if there's some real sketchy vehicle parked there, that only knows what.
Yeah, the problem we have with that is, is that, we, we agree with you, is that the statutes that the legislature adopted said that 72-hour notice has to be posted before you can come in and clean out the car on the campsite. So you have to wait three days, according to our esteemed legislature.
But what if that vehicle's illegally parked, then shouldn't that trump this ordinance? No pun intended.
That, that's a... Because this statute is specific as to, as to it being a matter of statewide concern that the 72-hour notice be given, of note, that you deliver notice of social services and all to people who are living in the car, I think it probably overrides the simple no parking. Whereas if nobody's in the car, you could have a toad. And if they walk away from it, maybe you can have a toad.
Also remember that this ordinance forbids all camping anywhere between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM.
Right.
So they, they only give exceptions from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, because all the court cases talk about sleeping, right, times. And so we give them that time, but we could kick the car out of there at 8:01, if they're using it for, for sleeping uses.
Unless it's like a day-use area like I was talking about, then, then they're okay to be there.
If it's a day-use area, then maybe you should talk to the parks folks about putting up a chain across the entranceway, or a gate to block it. I don't know if there's money in the budget for that, but those sorts of things can certainly be done if it's for day-use only.
That's a good idea.
Council Glantz?
I noticed we, on the definitions, talk about person, it's G, person experiencing homelessness, and the other versions I see at other cities have one, it's a different definition of involuntary homeless. Is there a reason that we have a different definition and name?
Involuntary? I think Ray and I talked about that, because, is that the word involuntary is in some of the other city codes? Because it may not be involuntary, somebody may be voluntarily homeless. There are people who would claim that.
Yeah, if you read the case law, it talks about those who don't have an alternative shelter. And the, the case law doesn't talk about whether it was intentional or unintentional, or accidental, or on purpose. But the key word was, is they, they don't have another regular residence to go to. And I think that's how you kind of have to define it, to be safe.
Okay, and then Glenn mentioned something that I hadn't thought about. What about pets? I see we have plans for how to handle children, but I don't see anything for pets.
The county has ordinances about animal control, and so does the city, and those would kick in, and the pound is not very far away if that's where the animals need to go.
Thanks.
Any other comments from council before I open up the public hearing? Council Witcher?
At the beginning, Council Glantz brought up time compared to other cities. Did we resolve that or discuss that? Are we good?
I think Gresham's, is it 8:00 AM to 6, or 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM? Was that what it was, the difference?
I'm looking through there.
So I think Portland is 8:00 to 8:00.
Yeah, a number of cities in the area gone 8:00 to 8:00. I think a lot of people follow Portland, because if somebody's going to get sued on those hours, it's going to be Portland.
I want, I suggested doing midnight to 8:00 AM, but I was vetoed on that.
Some people go to bed earlier than you.
That's eight hours of sleep, that's more than...
Gresham has 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, in April to September, and 8:00 to 6:00 in October to March.
Now, I would say that our, our, being consistent, probably is more likely, should be Wood Village and Fairview, since we have the same law enforcement. Gresham's law enforcement wouldn't be involved in ours, and so a difference, not effective enforcement confusion.
Good. I'd like it to, I'd like it to be as, I guess, consistent, instead of having different...
Like, Wood Village is fine, I mean, they have a different attitude towards homeless than we do.
Yeah.
So I think we need to take that into consideration.
And I didn't even look at Wood Village.
I don't think Wood Village and Fairview have it.
They do.
Didn't they just pass one recently?
No, I think Fairview passed theirs last year.
Oh, right, immediately.
Anyways, any other comments from council? All right.
I just said one, I recently read where Governor Kotek is talking about waiving wetland restrictions to build permanent, a new house, new low-income housing. So I thought of the Delta, and it really kind of concerned me, because that's mostly floodplain, and they are pretty much building permanent structures out there.
But that is a park, and it would have to be taken out of park use. Without knowing how the land was acquired, a lot of parks were donated to cities and the state for use as a park, and so that would prohibit it. But I, you know, without knowing what... But I, you know, without knowing what the deed restrictions might be in that, hard to say.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Public hearing is now open with regards to agenda item number five, an ordinance prohibiting camping on public property in accordance with state and federal law. If you wish to make comment regarding this ordinance, now's the time in council chambers. All right.
Adrian Kestner, Troutdale. I first want to say I completely agree with pretty much everything the council has set up until this point. And also what Mr. Trump had said makes perfect sense that the amount of legal room that is here is minimal. One thing I would like to call out, which is no contention, is that unhoused camping is, as I think others have alluded to, merely a symptom of a much larger, much more complicated regional problem. And as has been highlighted by the news media in recent weeks, Multnomah County has tens of millions of dollars for homeless services that they have somehow managed to not spend. And it might be worthwhile to exercise some communicative pressure on our representatives of Multnomah County to, to possibly get them to get there once a year and get some of that money allocated and spent on the services that would help this larger problem. Thus basically reducing the amount of enforcement that we would have to deploy.
Thank you, sir.
Did he ident, did you identify yourself?
Yeah.
I did.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
All right, sorry, Adrian Kestner.
Thank you. Look familiar.
Anybody on Zoom? Now's the time. Go ahead and unmute yourselves and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Mayor Paul Cox.
Paul.
Paul Cox, Troutdale. I made issues and touched on by Counselor White in particular and somewhat by Mr. Young. But I wasn't exactly, didn't sound like it was resolved exactly in my mind, anyway. Has to do with the, well, let me back up a bit here. Take it in order. Under time, you have 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Under penalties, you have, they're to be cleared out in 15 minutes after being instructed. So I'm reading that as if they're still there at 8:01 AM in the morning, any morning. They're supposed to be gone by 8:16. But then, then you have HB 3124 saying they're required to be given 72 hours notice. So are they then there for another three days? And then that 8:00 AM cutoff is kind of irrelevant and moot?
Just to answer that question, there, there's an odd phrase in the statutes that talks about an established camp, but nobody defines what an established camp is. As I recall, Multnomah County made up a definition that 24 hours, if somebody's been in one location for 24 hours, they just arbitrarily came up with that. So that 72 hour notice only applies to an established camp. Like they homesteaded there for long enough that whatever that is, that they have a right to longer time.
Okay, so just, just pitching the tent is not necessarily an established camp?
Correct. The understanding is that it's got to be something that they've put down roots or something. Like I said, it just, just like objectively reasonable time, place and manner. What does it mean? Established camp, there's no legal definition, common law or otherwise.
Okay. That sounds like kind of up in the air to me.
They use a phrase, established camp, but they don't give anybody a definition of what it means.
Okay, thank you, Ray. And Ray referred to some suggested edits that I had submitted to him. I don't have them in front of me exactly, but I, I have the text, so I'll work off of that.
I do. Suggested toward the end there under where the city manager and his designee may instruct the 15 minutes. He suggested that when I said the city manager and his designee made it sound like the two of us had to get together to agree. And the other one, he has the gendered language of his, deleting that. And then eight, then or peace officer, a peace officer. So essentially his suggestion is the city manager comma, the city manager's designee or a peace officer may instruct violators to clear, delete another A. So just some cleanup of that sentence, which sounded good to staff.
Okay, yes, that, that, that covers most of it. There also were a couple typos that I had pointed out in that same section. Toward the end of the line says to clear A there, there's an extra A, doesn't belong. And also in the actual ordinance, there's a extra word under item seven, the word replace in the first line. So Ray, Ray is aware of that one also. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else wishes to speak on this matter? Now's the time. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. I'm going to go ahead and close, close, close public comment. So any other comments or finishing questions from counsel or direction for staff? Counselor White?
Yeah, I think we should look at, I don't like the eight to eight, the 12 hour window because I know even like the Portland Rescue Mission, part of their program is to get those people up early and, and get them out there and get them on a more, more of a routine that the, the rest of us are on. So I, I think it's for their own benefit that, you know, they get, if you're a homeless, your, your job should be to, to help yourself get out of that situation. Getting up before 8:00 AM is probably a good part of the solution.
So are you suggesting eight to six?
Or 10, 10 to six.
10 to six.
If we mirror Gresham, then we would do the same. I mean, we're taking the other miss.
Yeah, let the bigger city get.
Yeah, let the bigger city take the heat.
They also had a split between two, two seasons, I'm guessing.
Gresham has, if I may interject, 10 to five, April 1st to September 30th.
Summer season.
And, yeah, and then eight to six, October 1st to March 31st.
I would generally suggest.
Things better than eight days.
The law courts and officers remember what date is today?
Yeah.
Maybe go with the, the 10 to six if counsel wants that, we can make that change.
I like 10 to six. I like tightening it up as much as we, as much as reasonably available to us. Like I said, I was in favor of 12 to eight. Gives our deputies something to do in the middle of the night.
Make a little next draft and see if somebody amends it and wants it back from the majority of council.
Okay. Counselor One?
Yeah. I guess I agree with everything everybody says. I think the tighter the restrictions, the better within the letter of the law. And I think it's, just to kind of piggyback off Mr. Kestner, like it's a multifaceted issue that we're dealing with. And I think it's important to be humane to people that are blessed with maybe what we in this room have. At the same time, I think that the most, the best that we can do to protect the citizens of our space and what that space looks like. I, I guess my only thing, my only question to whoever can answer this is, I think, like we said earlier with the city of Portland and, and my experience with all this is, is how do we enforce this? Who's going to enforce this? Are we going to enforce this? Because if we don't enforce it, the problem only gets worse and there's no accountability. So I just want to make sure that we do all this hard work on our part, which is great. We can, you know, cross Ts, dot Is and set ourselves up like Mayor Lauer said, you know, we have the ability to enforce someone just throwing garbage in Sunrise Park. Like, we don't want to not have that, but are we going to enforce these things? I guess that's my, whether it's a statement or whatever, but I just want us all to think really hard about, this is great, but like we have to enforce this. We have to be firm in our stance to keep our city, our city. And that's my personal thought and view on this. But I think that without, with ha, having rules and regulations is, is amazing. But if we don't enforce it, then it, it's all for, all for not. So that's all.
And I would respond that as long as I'm here, we'll do the best we can to enforce it. It's not quite as easy having Multnomah County Sheriff pressure from west of I-205 on different policies, but so far they have been very good to respond anytime there's any camping in a public right of way or public property. So as I said earlier, go and say, really? Come on, dude. Go somewhere else where they want you or go to these resources. Go to, you know, Bybee Lakes because they give those options and they've been very successful in moving people along.
Yeah, that was my other thing is that, I guess I just, real quick, is what resources does the city have to provide these people that humane part, right? So what do we have to give to them immediately without having to ask, you know, the city of, the city or the county for, I guess? And maybe that's multifaceted also, but that was one of my, that was kind of one of my thoughts is, are we providing that for them right, you know, immediately or does it have to come from somewhere else?
Because of the size and budget of Troutdale, we don't have the resources built into our system. We have abdicated that responsibility to the Multnomah County Joint Office of Homeless Services and the citizens of the region have dictated those financial resources to Metro through that tax that we have now to then be distributed to the Joint Office of Homeless Services. So the Joint Office has, you see some of these ordinances have things regarding, they have campgrounds in their city and they have, you know, navigators to go out and meet with people. Those functions are being performed by Multnomah County based upon the resources that the, that Troutdale citizens are already providing them. For us to also provide a duplicate service is to double tax our citizens for the same service we should be getting. And the biggest battle that I, Fairview, Wood Village, and to a lesser extent, but just as passionately Gresham are continually to work with the Joint Office and Multnomah County to make sure we get those resources out to East County. We have monthly Joint Office of Homeless meetings with the four cities and the Joint Office. And I will give her kudos. Commissioner Stegman has taken responsibility to be at those meetings now in person and will be facilitating those meetings. And so she understands that she has a responsibility to be the caretaker of East County in this regard because she's our commissioner. And there is a purchase going on of a hotel down near 181st to be used for that. And they already purchased a building on 195th and Stark for this purpose. So we are slowly but surely getting results out of Multnomah County to provide resources. And it's, somebody said earlier, they're not spending all the money they have. And it's, it's frustrating for those out in East County who have needs and we know they have money, but they're not getting directed. So we're continuing that push, Counselor One, but you are absolutely right. We have to enforce it and we have to provide the resources we can.
Okay, thanks.
I'll also interject here that as timely as Ray just pointed out, that Commissioner Stegman is our commissioner for Multnomah County. She's hosting a homeless services outreach roundtable tomorrow at 8:30? Is it 8:30 AM to 9:30?
I think so.
At City of Wood Village. And she's invited, I believe, all elected officials in East County. So tomorrow would be a great, I don't know, I'm sure there's a Zoom link, but tomorrow is a great time to get out and let Commissioner Stegman know exactly, you know, what we hope from the county as far as assistance. And I mean, they're our regional health and social service provider. Troutdale is too small. We do not have a budget for a health department. We don't have city, city staffed, health and social service workers. We rely on the county to do that. And I know that the county, in my opinion, has failed in many facets of their responsibilities over the past few years. And that's one that they've been failing on for a long time, for a couple decades now. And so tomorrow will be an interesting roundtable with the other East County cities and representatives. Counselor Glantz?
Okay.
Um, I was gonna, two things. I did never get that invitation. And the other one originally intended to ask, where did we land on environmental overlays or, you know, rivers, all that kind of stuff? Is staff going to go back and look at that?
I think we ended on a 250 foot buffer.
Yeah, yeah. It sounds good. Great, 250, sure.
Well, let's define established camp while we're.
Well, yeah, it's interesting. I noticed Wes Lynn's ordinance has 24 hours. Did you just, I don't know, I'm just looking at Mr. Trump. Did you guys just copy Multnomah County or?
The, the, yeah, Wes Lynn decided to have a committee do it without counsel.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so 250 feet.
Yeah, I turned to, and we talked about environmental areas. I'm also looking through our parks map and I'll probably come back with the next draft of the ordinance, the second hearing will include designated city parks that are like Helen Altus, the College Nature Park, other parks that are primarily dedicated to nature and preserving nature in some form or the other, to include those areas within the 250 feet away from.
Well, Helen Altus is also a reservoir site.
Yes.
So it's a water storage facility as well as a, as a basketball court.
So I'll have that included on the list of places along with the rivers.
Any other comments or questions for staff? All right. Thank you, everybody, for the conversation. We'll have another reading next council meeting. Okay. Something to look forward to. And speaking of which, agenda item number six, public hearing and ordinance introduction prohibiting unsafe or abusive solicitation on public property. Mr. Ray Young?
Thank you, Mayor. This one came up, one, because it's kind of closely associated with the camping one. So we added it on there. And it is an issue that we've had as some of you, most recently Counselor Whitton had noticed the issue and we worked on when somebody was down the street, is to deal with this idea of solicitation. It's commonly called panhandling. It is very clear under the law that we cannot ban panhandling solicitation throughout the city. You just can't do it. People have a free speech right to be able to ask people for things. And it's that spoken expressive word that you can't ban. However, the general rule, as I recall from law school, is, is that if there's an overriding governmental interest that is more important than free speech and we tailor that overriding government interest to only deal with that interest and not be too broad to invoke restrictions on free speech, we have the right to do it. And generally, when cities have wanted to ban panhandling, they've done it broadly and that's what gets whacked down. And so what we have done is we've crafted an ordinance that limits it to those areas that are clearly dangerous because that is the purpose behind this, is the danger. As we heard from Multnomah County, there's 18,000 cars a day. Forty percent of those are trucks that go down 257th. And that's generally where we see it, down at the freeway entrances at 257th and Halsey, where they'll step out in the roadway. And this ordinance goes both ways. It allows a citation to be issued to the person asking and the person giving. We want to make sure that both are treated equally in this regards. I can't imagine we're going to get that a lot, but when we have people doing this, we want to be able to have a specific ordinance that is hopefully within the free speech protections, but does provide for safety around those very busy intersections in town. So that is the ordinance and why it's there.
Comments or questions from counsel? Counselor Glantz?
How do we define abusive?
We did.
It's subsection two of eight. It's subsection two of eight forty-two oh three oh. And it's a long definition that includes continuing to solicit after the person's been told not to, blocking or impeding the passage of the person, uh, who's been solicited, uh, following the person, touching the person and using threatening gestures, words or actions.
You have to be fairly specific in terms of how we define it so that it's clear as opposed to being vague.
Somebody could say some of those words are vague, but I think that, uh, it's about as clear as you can make it.
Council White?
Just one thought, I haven't seen it in Oregon, but, um, like in, um, certain cities in Texas, there's, there's a busy intersection. You got people on the streets selling bottled water, cleaning windshields, selling newspapers.
This covers it.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it's offering anything of value or asking for money is what Mrs. defined as for the solicitation piece.
Which is very dangerous.
Yes, but I think Ray wrote that definition and it's very good.
There is one city though who use firemen to raise money, you know, the boot thing. And they had some type of weird exception in their ordinance for that reason. We don't have that issue in Troutdale. If it ever comes up, we can always modify the ordinance if there's, if somebody has a good, but it's still dangerous even for them.
Uh, Council Witcher?
Yeah, uh, just kind of a question or just talking out loud, the blocking or impeding the passage of the person being solicited. And I know several times in some of the pictures I was giving you, Ray, when they pick up their camp at night and then they're on the sidewalk or they have their chair out there and they've completely blocked or impeded the whole sidewalk. I don't know if there's some way to interject that in there or if it's inherent, I'm not quite.
That goes back to camping. They have to, uh, they can't block, they have to leave a forty-eight inch wide walkway through the sidewalk, uh, or else that's blocking. And we came up with forty-eight inches in order to make it so that somebody on a wheelchair and somebody maybe on a bicycle or walking can cross, pass each other.
That's under, yeah, matter regulations number one.
So, so they have to move their campsite.
Goes back to that one, not the, not this one.
But the solicitation piece then is, is the lesser of those maybe.
Yeah, it says the, uh, a person without alternative shelter is presumed to obstruct pedestrian traffic if a person reduces the path of travel to less than forty-eight inches where camps in any way provided, any place provided for vehicular traffic.
So even though they're soliciting on their camp chair on a sidewalk, it goes back to the camping.
If they've got their camp stuff and they're blocking the sidewalk.
Well, it's just, what if they're just in a chair with the sign blocking the sidewalk?
Well, then, then they're blocking or impeding the passage of the person they're soliciting, which becomes this.
That's what I, that's what I was saying.
It may be both.
Yeah, it was just, I didn't know if there was a little more meat on the bone there to, I don't know.
Yeah, they're blocking then.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Council One?
Yeah, maybe this doesn't necessarily matter or it's not really our, anyways. Uh, so their panhandling and is, what is, uh, what is our like idea of like how this is dealt with, right? So I know that there are, we have a penalty section. You know, any violations, uh, constant misdemeanor punishable, thirty days in jail, thousand or fine. I'm assuming they're giving it, giving a ticket. Is it like, who, you know, someone reports it? Is it, uh, some sort of officer comes and says like, hey, you need to like move along? Is that, I'm sure that's, is that the first line of? And then if they choose not to move or if they come back and then officer has to come back, that's when they're issued a citation? Is that, is that my understanding how something like this works more? Maybe this is more curiosity.
Yes, as a practical matter, most of the time it's the hope team that's involved who's specially trained to deal with those who are experiencing homelessness. And that is always the option. I, I, I don't know if you want to call it a public relations issue or otherwise, but you want to first get them into services or an authorized campground first. If this ordinance is primarily going to be directed toward those who do not obey a direction to move on, to leave. And so we have some stick if we need to, but it's a public policy. We're more likely to rely upon, um, cooperation first. And then when we see resistance, well, you need to have that stick because the carrot won't work if you don't have a stick.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't just like going to hand out the first time we see somebody. So that makes sense to me. Thanks.
Yeah, no, that, this, our, we're still going to approach them with the idea, we want you, but we want to be able to say, if you don't, because I, I have had guys argue with me about it. And now we can say, fine, if you don't want to, that's fine. We'll just cite you in a municipal court. It's up to you. And this way we have a specific ordinance that hopefully passes constitutional muster. More so than we had before.
All right, any other comments or questions from council before we open up public hearing? All right, let's go ahead and open up public hearing. Public hearings open on this, uh, introduction for an ordinance prohibiting unsafe or abusive solicitation on public property. Uh, if you wish to speak now, council chambers, uh, go ahead and approach the table. Make it the hat trick. Do we call it the hat trick?
Realizing now I'm coming back to the table, I don't think as much as I.
Oh, there you go.
Which would probably explain why Council Rittman didn't hear me before. Um, uh, anyway, Adrian Kestner at Troutdale. Um, one question that came to mind, I know that this was constructed largely around the, uh, uh, sol- solicitation commonly referred to as panhandling. But does anything need to be added or modified in the language to deal with, um, how do I put this? Uh, exuberant political operatives?
Uh, are you talking about signature gatherers?
Either signature gatherers or, um, people that are in, um, election season that are hanging out at the corner of two fifty-seventh and Halsey.
Waving signs.
Waving great big signs, blocking the sidewalk and encouraging, uh, like-minded people to, to slow down and honk loudly.
Well, that gets into political speech specifically, which if they're on the sidewalk, they can do that. We can't stop that because they're not requesting anything from anybody or doing anything. If they step into the street, we still have pedestrian laws in this, the Oregon State, um, vehicle code prohibits pedestrians from entering the roadway unsafely. So you still have that as a back.
Yeah, that's sort of what I thought, but I thought I'd bring up the question since, and since the way it's worded can potentially be interpreted to go beyond where I think the original intent was, which is. Anyway, that's all.
Okay, thanks, sir. Anybody on Zoom wishes to make a comment regarding this agenda item, this ordinance introduction? Now's the time, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your city, uh, your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Mayor Lauer, Paul Wilcox.
All right, Paul, hat trick as well.
Uh, Paul Wilcox, Troutdale. I think you've got the, uh, Mr. Wilcox tag team this evening. I've got one particular paragraph that I have issues with. Eight, eight point four two point oh four oh prohibited unsafe solicitation. Um, I'll read portions of it without having to feel in all the words. A person commits the offense if the person, while a driver or passenger in a vehicle. And then farther down it says, or allows another person in the vehicle. So this, you know, the way that reads, it sounds like whether you're passing the item or allowing someone else in the car to pass the item or anybody else in the car is allowing it to occur, to occur is subject to citation. So that's kind of, you know, it's like anybody in the, the way it reads is anybody in the car is subject to citation for whatever somebody else in the car might be doing in relation to the solicitor. Also, you know, having the same penalty apply to both the, uh, solicitor and the solicitee seems kind of excessive to me. I was thinking of a scenario where, um, you know, somebody's, somebody's stopped at a traffic light in their vehicle and somebody's in the median with their, uh, sign that says homeless. And it's a hundred degrees out and the driver of the vehicle passes on a bottle of water. And that, that, that's a, so does the, uh, say there's a deputy three or four cars back. He sees this, uh, transfer of goods. So you're going to go after the, uh, chase down the person in the car and, you know, do a, a traffic stop? And also, uh, that brings another idea to the, uh, another question about your de- definition of solicitation. It requires requesting in either verbally or in writing, requesting something. But, you know, some of these signs just, it'll just say homeless or, you know, out of work or whatever. They're not specifically asking for something. You know, there's an implication that they're, you know, looking for cash. They're probably not looking for a bottle of water or a, or a sandwich. But, you know, if the sign or the verbal isn't there, request isn't there, I don't see how they could be cited based on your definition of solicitation.
Let me walk backwards. That, was that the three you had, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Okay, walking backwards. It does say or non-verbal request or communication. Holding up a sign would be considered, uh, in, in a way, uh, non-verbal request or communication if the intent was to solicit funds. And I guess you could also wait until they stuck their hand out to take something, uh, because they weren't being successful. They were staying on the curb. Um, you could argue that way. Uh, the other one that gives water, um, if we're going to survive constitutional muster, you have to make it about safety. And if you can give water to somebody on the side of the road, but you can't give them money, you're forbidding one type of speech while allowing another in the same dangerous situation. So to be consistent, you would have to make giving a, a bottle of water just as illegal. Um, and I would suggest, well, just go pull off legally, walk over and give him the water. Um, it's still creating the same danger either way. And then the, the first one you had, um, you know, your word ordinances and statutes sometimes to cover scenarios that may be highly unlikely, but you want to make sure nobody tries to trick you or get away with something. Um, I could see, you talked about prohibited unsafe solicitation on number one, under eight forty-two oh four oh. A person commits the offense of unlawful transfer on the roadway. The person, while a driver or passenger in a vehicle on highway, rotor street within the boundaries, within a hundred feet of it, gives or relinquishes possession or control of, or allows another person in the vehicle to give or relinquish possession or control, which basically means if you say here to the passenger, give them twenty dollars for me to try to avoid, or gives their ten-year-old daughter, hey, you give it because they won't write you a ticket. You still want to be able to cite the person who instigated the transfer, uh, to create the dangerous situation. So it, it's unlikely to be a scenario that might arise, but you want to at least foreclose anybody trying to look for a loophole.
All right. Anybody else wishes to make public comment? Now's the time. Okay, not seeing anybody, I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing. Any other comments or questions from council regarding agenda item number six? All right. Thank you, everybody. So we'll hear this again, uh, same council meeting is when the next, when the other ordinance comes back.
September twelfth.
Yeah, I appreciate all the conversations and the comments from the public. All right, let's move on. Agenda item number seven, staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, number one, um, don't forget first Friday is, uh, a week from this Friday. Very successful last, last one, it was great. So don't forget first Friday, September first, it is the Friday before Labor Day weekend.
Is it first and last? Or is there one in October?
I wasn't going to say the word last because we're going to have them next year.
Of this year.
Of this season. Yes, it, it will be the last one on the calendar we have for this season. But the merchants downtown want people to keep coming downtown on the first Friday because they still have events downtown. That's why I was told not to say it's the last one.
Every Friday.
Every Friday, this is the last one. The city will be sponsoring, how's that? Uh, number two, uh, slurry ceiling is going to be going crazy all over the city next week. We put out all the notices, we've told everybody, we're getting it all done before school starts the following week. And so you'll see a lot of streets covered with slurry in the next couple of weeks. Part of our annual maintenance program, deep part streets, working really well. And, uh, finally, on September twentieth, the Parks Advisory Committee is going to continue their ongoing discussion about dogs in or out of parks. Leashed, unleashed, muzzled, not muzzled. They're continuing that discussion. So if you want some entertainment, uh, September twentieth at their meeting. But I would caution the council from doing anything more than listening since we've discussed before. You have an overly weighted, um, influence on city committees. If council members start speaking up and making comments about their discussion, uh, you'll get your chance to discuss it. Uh, but if you just want to know what kind of issues they're wrestling with, feel free to, you know, check out the Parks Advisory Committee on September twentieth, and that's all I have, Mayor.
They shouldn't mark out instructions?
No, they should not.
You did come with the jokes tonight.
Yeah.
All right, let's go on to agenda item number eight, council communications. I'm just going to go down the list. Council Rittma?
Well, summer's over. It isn't quite, but it was a glorious one. Anyway, all the first Fridays were good, uh, really good, really well attended. And, uh, everybody seemed to be having a great time. Uh, the one this Friday, the, uh, there's a free concert, outdoor concert at the Troutdale Historical Society Barn next to the Harlow House, if you get a chance. Other than that, I'll just say welcome back to us all. That's all.
Thanks, sir. Uh, Council Caswell?
Yeah, nothing for me.
Council One?
Uh, well, our summer is always around, the Pacific Northwest is fabulous. So I just hope everybody had and enjoyed their summer in the, our great city, state and, uh, region. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Uh, Council White?
Yeah, I was kind of disappointed to see the bike racks go in and take away parking on East Historic Columbia Road. I understand the county did it, but we had all that discussion amongst council to not take, take, take away parking. And if we're going to do a bike rack, try to do something decorative. So I think we ended up with double bike racks. Uh, just frustrating, just like tonight, I think the conversation, any of our ideas fell on deaf ears and it's more of a PR exercise than anything. So just wish they would listen a little more because, you know, we don't want to be cookie cutter designs. But that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Council Witcher?
I, we, we've discussed a lot about safety lately and it seems to be a topic in, especially my own neighborhood with the broken street signs, blown up mailboxes, just some people up and down the streets that we don't necessarily recognize. I myself am being questioned a lot in my own driveway as I'm out and about. Neighbors are concerned and I know that, well, the county sheriff is very short-staffed, right? And, but neighborhood policing, I think, is still needed, wanted. And occasionally we do see cars through there and, and I just think just a little bit of coaching from somebody to Multnomah County Sheriff to just take it a little bit slower, roll your windows down, especially with nice weather, say hi. You know, get to know the neighborhood a little bit to let them know that they are there serving the community just to, to make that relationship in the neighborhoods could go a long way with calming the, the neighborhoods down a little bit and let them know their, their priority. So just voicing my neighborhood.
Mr. Ray Young?
If I can interject there, number one, we have done a huge public media ask for help on the stop signs, news media locally have done it, we've done it on social media. The last ten days to two weeks, we've not had any reoccurrence.
Yes.
So people are watching, people know they're watching, and so it's, it's likely that seems to have slowed down. And on the community policing, yes, we're working hard on that. One of the things we just did for part of that was Friday night, we had two deputies actually on the grounds of Columbia Park at movie night on Friday night. Uh, we had, um, Deputy Boar and Deputy Yates, who was our summer resource deputy. And, uh, it was great to have them right there because we had over five hundred people at movies in the park on Friday night. It was an amazing event, perfect night. And so we had two of them that were very engaged with wandering around and being part of that. And so we had two of them that were very engaged with wandering around and being part of that crowd. So we'll continue to push that philosophy.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Glenns?
I saw, uh, uh, Glenn and his family on a Troutdale promotional video that was put out on Twitter, I think it was yesterday.
So did I.
Didn't see you. I saw Glenn and I saw his wife and I didn't, I didn't recognize anybody else, but very well done. I'm not sure.
Long time ago.
And that was a short we did Friday night before the two movies. We actually played that for the premiere showing of that video.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, no, I was not in it. I was just saying, I saw Glenn and Diane. It was, it was a great video.
I haven't seen it yet. I'm curious, no.
It was awesome. Um, I got nothing. Thanks for the great discussion and welcome back to council.
I'm openly adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most. All right, everybody. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Didn't mean to cut you off, Randy.
That's all right. That's okay. I get it.
I thought I'd better grab my chance.
Thanks, everybody.
Night, everybody.